Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, let's see, we're in March, meeting of the Harlan Community School District Board of Education. And so we want to welcome everyone here, and glad to see everyone. And first item here is to see if we have a quorum, and I think we barely do between sick people and a couple people out of town. And so there's four of us here, and so we can go ahead with the meeting. So first thing we'll do is call the meeting to order, and we've determined the quorum. And, yeah, we don't vote on that, do we? Okay. So the second item here is the public forum, and I'd remind you, I think I've mentioned it a number of times before, that this is a public forum, and citizens are welcome to come and speak and talk to, talk to the board. However, there are some rules, this is actually the policy number 213, and so they had to tell Board Secretary a couple hours at least before the meeting, and then they have five minutes to present what they'd like to talk about. And so, and then the board really can't comment on it this time, but we're here to listen, and we'd like to hear what's being said, and what your ideas are. So I'll turn it over to Catherine.
Yes, we did have someone, but they are not here. So I guess they don't want to talk to us.
Can we hold that, in case they show up? I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know that we can, but...
Yeah, I imagine we should move on to the other items on the agenda, and you know, next month they'd be welcome to come back. And I did get something in my email about the issues, and so there's, anyway. If that's okay with everyone, what do you think?
I want to see who just walked in.
Okay. Yep.
You could hear the outside door. Catherine heard that outside door. Yeah, I don't think that...
I'm gonna say...
Yeah. She's all off my...
Jack in trouble.
Let's move on.
Okay, we'll move on to item number C, which is approval of the agenda. Any questions on the agenda, or discussion on the agenda? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved by Greg, second by Jen. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next is item D, discussion items, and so I'll turn it over to Dr. Ornette.
Okay. Just a couple things. My goal meeting will be next in April, and it'll be a closed session, but my two goals are just ensuring trust, transparency, and communication with each step of the facility upgrades, and just making sure I communicate with you, and parents, and staff, and whomever else. And then the second goal was just to market and continue to grow the CTE and the STEM programming, which I feel like I cannot take much credit for that, but we've got lots of things in place that are, that are moving that, so we'll talk more about that and my evaluation, but Jen just wanted me to share those two. And then we have, the robotics team is here today, so Kylie, come, I was gonna say Kylie Gross, wrong Kylie, is here with the students, so they're gonna present to us, but they would like us to go to the gym, so they can present in there.
Oh, cool.
Okay? I know, so, sorry Jonathan.
Oh, can I check Stacy?
Is this where the board meeting is?
Yes, but, okay. Do you wanna...
I, I, all work in opportunity.
Okay, so come on in, you have, you have five minutes.
Okay, with you Jennifer, and Jen. Okay.
Where do you want me?
I've never done that before.
Yeah, wherever you'd like to go, you have five minutes to address us?
Wait right here, Chi Chi.
Stacy, I'm gonna start a timer. And you have five minutes to speak, and then when it goes off...
I don't think I'll need five minutes.
Okay.
All right, I'll just read what I wrote up here. Okay. Do I stand, or...
Whatever you'd like.
So I'm Stacy Conde, I'm, I've got two kids of my own in this district, and three foster kids. I have a kiddo that is pretty passionate about aviation, and so we went to Ignite Academy, or Pathways, to learn more about that track, and they had told me what it would take to kind of get Harlan and Ignite partnered to help him pursue his dream, so I wanted to kind of give some information to ask you guys' consideration to do what I used to call dual enrollment, but I guess it's called concurrent enrollment, where it's shared credits across school districts, I guess you would call it. But in my research, I have found that there was a lot of, I guess, personal things that's happened with the prior superintendent before I even moved into this town, and I just kind of feel like, you know, I have no idea what's going on there, I just care about my son, you know? So I wanted to make sure that was kind of removed from any decisions on moving forward. The other thing I ran into is, people think that all of the money is gonna go with the student if they are concurrent enrolled, and they're not. It is only just the state funding gets split, which I found out is gonna go up to 7635 next year. So under 13,000 that a student gets, only 7,000 of that gets split between the two, the two schools. They are having a open house course, oh gosh, I can't remember what it's called, next Monday on the 25th, from 4:00 to 7:00, inviting parents, administrators, just to come look at the building, the courses that they offer, the hands-on simulator they have in their rooms, which is really amazing, they have like $52,000 flight simulators that they use in flight training, they have an entire hospital bay with simulated dummies to work on for the medical field, and things like that. So that is what I want to do, is to ask you guys to consider doing a concurrent enrollment for the students' apartment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Shall we move on to the...
Yeah. Run into the gym?
Yes, to the gym, and see a presentation on, what is this?
The STEM robotics, so they've got...
Okay.
I think they have a competition...
Competition going on.
Yeah, they do.
Looking at the system, oh, it's right here. Yeah.
It's awesome, guys. All right, Jason, pick us off.
Stacy, we are going to UNA to compete in the first, first crescendo robotics, robotics competition.
Molly, go ahead.
So business plan, and then a website with our newsletter, members, and our competitions, as well as our sponsors, which are on the front of the robot too.
Our bill?
We have a little base suspended on wheels to work together to carry our launcher that is powered by two motors, that will launch a note into a six-foot speaker from about three feet away. And at the end afterwards, if we score as many points as we can, we will attempt to raise the entire robot using the hook from the back, and four-foot chain.
What's the last word?
Launcher, there's the two circles, they spin, it sucks the note in, this is the note, these are what we're shooting up into the speakers, like Trey mentioned, it sucks this in, and then we have to go up to the speaker, and we have to shoot it up into there, and that'll get us points.
What about the claw?
The claw?
The claw.
The claw, I thought you said claw. Uh, the claw, that'll hook onto a chain on something in the middle of the court, which we can shoot the note up back into the thing, I don't know what it's called, but... The center of it? The center of it. What's that one's called? Yeah, I mean, uh, big speaker, that's what I'm gonna call it. It hooks onto the big speaker and shoots it back up into there.
Corey, you wanna talk about the electrical part, and then start it up?
All the, all of it is powered by the twelve-volt battery that goes into a breaker that goes into the power distributor and powers all of the circuitry. So there's spark boxes hooked up to each one of the motors, and they're all numbered, so it works. Then we have a schematic of transferring data that goes to the motors, back to the power distributor to get power to all the spark boxes. Then we have our robo-rayo, which is, holds all the code, and that goes to the radio, which then tells our computer what to do.
Somebody wanna launch for Corey? And Lake, do you wanna go feed it at the end?
Sure.
This is a game of box sports, and they have to figure out how to get them together, how to make it work. They've got... We're gonna go out and... So they're gonna show you, they'll drive their robot down, just like they will in the competition, it's kind of like Plinko, they will drop one of the notes down into the robot, the wheels will suck it in, they'll drive it back, and then they have a big platform that they have to shoot the frisbee looking down the same way. Wait, they want to feed it in there, you can't. So they'll drive up to you, and they'll...
You didn't wear?
You just put it right by those wheels, and it'll suck it in.
Yeah.
Do you guys wanna hold the pipe and show how they'll fly? So Molly's grabbing the PVC pipe to lift the robot off the ground. Our competition will have over 50 teams, most teams have about 30, we have 11 on our team, so they all have different responsibilities of what they'll do, so at the end of the competition, they have to raise their robot off the ground, onto a chain, so that's how it's gonna work. How many is it? It's almost 85 pounds. Yeah, so the max rate is 125, a lot of the robots are smaller this year, so we went off of a kit of parts, so this is a suggested model of how to make our, or make your robot, you can make them however you want, some will actually pick the frisbees up off the ground, but not our robot this year. We just worked on the intake, and then the claw to... It's all points-based, and we're in an alliance, so every competition will be paired with two other teams, so us as three teams will try to... Is that the name for your robot?
Jeff.
Jeff, Chandler?
It is not agreed upon.
Yeah, they have the little camera on the front, so they have to go through some obstacles, so on their driver's station, you guys can walk by too, they can actually see where the robot is going on their... And we're performing in the... It's the same one as the...
It's in the dome, it's in the dome.
It's in the UNA dome, yes. Our team number is 9543, and then we have all of our sponsors on the front, so some of our big sponsors, we're NASA, Argosy Fund, Corteva, and then Caductics, and then we also have some other local sponsors with Hy-Vee, Jacob, Spareaway, and Express Loop Tire, so they help fund our robot to get started, and then to continue on. So the kids will leave Wednesday night, and they'll stay in a hotel until Saturday night, and so they'll practice, and then they have like a round robin type tournament, and then the top 24 teams will be in the championships on Saturday. Yeah. Good luck, guys.
Have fun. Look at that.
Good job.
Very impressive.
Okay, so, Facility Committee update, I sent you guys notes, so the auditorium is almost done, they took down where the shelves meet the curtains, they're taking that layer, and they're gonna shorten them a tiny bit, just to try to help some. High school renovations, you'll see, you can see some new trailers that are out, out by the middle school, those are the prime contractors. All of the other classroom trailers will be out here, so there will be some...
It's flagged out, right now, you can see.
It's, oh, it's...
It's flagged out, yeah.
Yeah, but they won't come until July, June, into June. And we're just working on making sure those are fire safe, and have electricity, and have, and everything we need for those. Let's see, middle school gym AC will be before the high school gym AC, so that's coming, the air conditioning will be first in the middle school as soon as we get out of school in the spring here. And everything on the intermediate side is ahead of schedule a little bit, and I don't know if you've been over there, but you can see the walls now, and they will pour the concrete as soon as it's, it's nice enough for a few days, so that's coming soon. Middle school, we have an issuance four, which is the middle school entrance, and so that, we have the pre-bid meeting on Thursday of this week, and at 3 o'clock, so we'll know what those bids are gonna be. Otherwise, that's about it for facility.
We have a special board meeting proposed for the 25th, does everybody know that?
Oh, we do have a special board meeting, and that's for the budget hearing, which we have...
Which we're required to have.
There's a new process, so there's, you have to have two hearings instead of one, so this will be the first one, the second hearing will be our normal April meeting, so we won't have to have two special meetings.
Yeah, I might have mentioned at the same time, that's when we'll do the superintendent evaluation required by the state, that once a year, we, we evaluate our, the boss here of the Harlan School District, and usually Jennifer, Jenny requests that we do that in a closed session, and so that has its own procedures, just so, just so you know, that next month, we have a little time set aside for a special, for a closed meeting to after the regular board meeting. So you know it's coming up.
Okay, and student accolades, do you wanna move on?
Sure, please.
Yeah?
You bet. So the first group right there, we got Jeremiah, Kinsley, and Kinsey, they must have been one of the, I think they were the keyboarding kings or queens of the month, and then I think we have Mr. Peterson in the next, at our reading week, remember when I said it was kind of like our Super Bowl and all that stuff with our Read Across America Week, we had a great turnout, we had the author come, I don't know if anybody had a chance to come out, I guess some of you guys, saw some of you guys there, I mean, it is absolutely crazy how many people show up and come to that, great turnout, I hate to throw out names, but, because I'll forget somebody, but the teachers did an awesome job, Paula Kiergert was the organizer of it, and put in numerous hours, so couldn't do it without people like Paula, so great turnout for the amount of people, it's just crazy, it really is. And our specialist teachers got together and they ordered themselves some new t-shirts. So, you know what, and they are special, so we call it specialists teachers, because it's not your core areas, but they do an amazing job to help round off all the, all the edges, so, that's the elementary.
That first picture is, we had four gals go and compete in the history day competition, and they placed either first or high enough to move on, so that is great, out of two categories. The next one is some seventh graders in Mrs. Meyer's room that are doing some projects on the solar system. In the last picture there, we had a, we had 13 kids, I think it was, that went to a math count, so it's middle school, it's kind of like the math bee, old math bee, kind of, now it's called math counts, and we had one individual, William Sandquist there, he placed first out of all the sixth graders, and then his score was actually, I think it was eighth overall, that placed in between with all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and then this team qualified to move on or advance to the state competition, so they'll have that. One other thing that's not in the picture up there that they just got back with though is Mrs. Sondag, she does a program called Battle of the Books, it's a, it's 12 books that have been awarded from the Iowa Children's Choice Award Books, and so anyone that wants to be in that competition, you create your own little team, and you divide up in your team who's gonna read what books, and then you have a competition with all the schools in southwest Iowa, and it's kind of like trivia, or where you get asked questions about, maybe it might have been a phrase, or something about a scene, and you've gotta come up with what book that was, and so we had three teams participate, and they're all moving on to the next round, so that was good for those kids that enjoy reading, so kind of tagging up on Mr. Mosier's reading, there was some reading stuff at middle school that they just got the results for.
We have the high school FFA, they actually had their annual FFA banquet last Thursday, and had a great turnout. RJ won honorary FFA member of the year, which was really fun, very deserving, so yeah, it was a great banquet, have a lot of FFA members. The robotics team, you just saw, what's his name, Jeffrey? Is that what some are calling him? They went to Des Moines in a few weeks ago, and went through like a trial run, and so that's what this picture is, is they went to Des Moines, and they, they actually had some help, and, and when they came home, they could drive their, drive their robot, so they were excited about that. And we leave on Wednesday for you and I, and get to compete in the dome, which I think is cool, and, and then the esports team headed to state in Rocket League, and they, they went to Marshalltown to compete in that, so that was cool. And then we just have the girls, since we last met, the girls' team made it to state, so that was super exciting, and there's a good show, or there was a lot of people there, but a good picture of our crowd, and then the construction that we just talked about, things are, things are moving. And Mr. Willwarding received a sportsmanship award at the state basketball game, and another person who's very, very deserving of that.
He does a lot of volunteer work at many basketball games, that people don't even understand the amount of hours that he does, so we appreciate him a lot, and he's a second or first grade teacher.
Second.
Second grade teacher, he does a great job. All right.
Very good, thank you principals, I appreciate your updates. If that's okay with everyone, we'll move on to item E, the action items, and start with your item number one, the personnel report. Turn it over to Catherine, please, if you wanna fill us in.
Yeah, we've been busy, we've hired several new teachers for next year, and, I mean, some coaches along the way too, softball coach, which everyone was excited about. We, at this point, now have, since, it almost changes the day we post, right? So now we have two special education teachers that we are looking for, we have Connie Scheckinger from the high school leaving us, and Paula Baughman from the middle school, so we were all hired up, and now we have, we're looking for two special education teachers, but other than that, contracts will hopefully go out this week.
I see a few resignations, I imagine that's normal this time of year when before contracts go out.
Yeah, a lot of them are, the coaching resignations on there, we're just kind of catching ourselves up. We have a few teachers, we've got Alexis Osman, we've already got her position filled, and then the two teachers that I just spoke about in the middle school and the high school for special education, everything else, we're interviewing for our elementary custodian, or actually, we've hired the elementary custodian, and we have still in middle school custodian that we're still looking to hire.
And most of the resignations, you know about before they happen, or just...
Yeah, yep, and then, so contracts go out, and then they have 21 days to sign their contracts, so if we're gonna have more resignations, we'll know here before the next year.
So we might have a few more.
We may.
Discussion on that, any questions for Catherine? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved.
So moved by Greg.
Oh, sorry guys.
Seconded by Jen, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, and those opposed, no. Next we have item two, which is the approval of the partial self-funding for medical insurance for the 2024-2025 contract year. Could you wanna tell us about?
No interest.
Hold this trip in.
Um, so we are recommending that we go to partial self-funding for next year, and basically what that means is, anything above and beyond a certain deductible is self-funded by the district, and we hire a company to do that for us, so basically, anything, we had a very high renewal, and this is helping us, while you guys were there, but this is helping us keep our insurance premiums as low as we possibly can. So by partial self-funding, employees will see a small change in that they, they get two EOBs now, so the first EOB will come, and then they'll get a second one, and that's what they, they're going to use to pay their, their bills. So we are going to set up some education, our brokers are coming on August 7th, or April, excuse me, April 17th, our professional development day, to educate, start the education process, because it's, it's gonna be a little bit of a change for our employees, and so we're going to start the education process on April 17th during professional development, and then of course...
We were able to keep the deductibles the same.
Our deductibles will be the same.
Deductibles will stay the same.
And then, and then we're going to open enrollment, so people are able to change the plan if they'd like to, then shortly after we do the education, and before the July 1st renewal. Something else that we decided to do is, currently, our deductibles and our plan year are different, so with this new process, we are going to make them the same, so they'll be calendar years, so we'll start, and that'll be a lot better for our employees, because it's a little confusing when your deductibles and your plan years don't line up.
We'll do a short plan year for the first year, and then...
July to December. Yeah.
Thank you, have questions or comments about... Thank you, have questions or comments about that?
It's well spoken.
Yeah, very well said. I'll, I'll say that Al and I sent in on one of the meetings from Holmes Murphy, is that the agent?
Our broker.
And uh, it's, it's amazes me, uh, these geniuses, what they can come up with to try and make this work. And the whole emphasis is on keeping things as reasonable as we can for our teachers and for the staff and administrators. And it's a, it's a big thing, a difficult thing. And uh, I know they really uh, used a lot of brain power to come up with this. Uh, it's amazing what they can do, but they're trying to keep it as reasonable as they can for everybody. So I was really impressed at the meeting.
Even to compare right now our dental, we are self-funded for our dental. So I mean, if you didn't know, you wouldn't know.
It's paid, yeah, but it's paid dividends to doing that.
Yeah, you can't, can't really do justice to it in five minutes, but you did very well.
Thanks.
Because it's, you could spend a lifetime trying to.
Yeah, so Holmes Murphy, um, they're going to take an hour and educate. And then hopefully, I mean, if, if we need them to come back, they'll come back again.
Yeah, education's a very important part of it, isn't it?
Yes.
Questions or would somebody want to make the motion to approve the presentation? Uh, let's see, get this right. Yeah, approve uh, the partial self-funding of medical insurance for this twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year? So moved by Jen. Seconded by Jennifer. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and those opposed, no. Okay, next we have item three here, the approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Chromebook uh, bids.
Okay, I'm going to hand this over to Jeremy. Jeremy did a really good job and we ended up getting good news and we're saving a lot of money. Um, even just moving to Chromebooks and then the initial bid that we had thought this is less than what we, what we.
Well, we budgeted for.
What we budgeted for, so. So we are going to switch over from having HP computers to uh, Chromebooks. And probably ninety-five percent of the districts in Iowa use Chromebooks. It's all cloud-based and we, we're going to get some in kids' hands too to just pilot and use. So we'll start at the underages. Teachers will still have the option of having a Chromebook or an HP, so you can decide. And then the classes that need Excel or different pieces, like your business classes, will still have access to that and have um, Excel on their computers as well. So we're trying to do the best we can um, and make everybody happy, but yet save some money. So, anything else, Jeremy?
Well, as far as this goes, I went out and I reached and I got four bids on the same exact model. It's an Acer uh, five eleven, seven thirty-six or C seven thirty-six. The big reason we went Acer is we looked at what Council of Love's does. And we looked at other districts around, even HST. What, what, you know, models they use and you could six to one, half a dozen of the other. We grabbed an Acer, we grabbed some HPs, we grabbed some Dells. Took them apart, tore them apart, what's it going to take to repair? Um, but what we really looked at was what Acer offers is the ability to certify some of our students to repair these in-house. So not only are kids going to get exposure next year on a student-led help desk, they're also going to get a certification and that means something for their portfolio if they decide to go into this. All of the companies offered it, Acer's just seemed to be, be a bit above. So what we did was I went out for four different bids. Uh, we had a local bid and then we had two bids that were within, what was it, eleven hundred and eighty-nine dollars? Or eleven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of each other. RTI was just a shade above CDWG. But we've done business with RTI for the last thirteen years or who we've bought our laptops through. But they've also offered networking, consultation, and other things that they haven't charged us a dime for. So they've been a great partner for the last thirteen years and we'd like to stick with them.
I think it's exciting too that, that we aren't going to be able to have a student-led um, help desk and they'll be able to get their certificate. So this was just another whole layer of just speaking to the hands-on things and the things we can offer through Iowa Western and many other certificates that we can provide, which will be great.
One last thing I wanted to bring up was this puts Chromebooks, we already are in the hands of pre-K through grade three. This puts it four through eight then. So everybody, uh, pre-K through eight will have them and then next year will go uh, nine through twelve. So it gives us a two-year window to kind of, okay, what, what do we need to fix for next year before we make this a all-the-way-through changeover, so.
Very good, thank you for your report. Questions, comments? Makes sense to me. So we'll proceed on that, see if we could get a motion to approve the uh, Chromebooks bid. From RTI. From RTI. So moved. By Greg, seconded by Jen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next is item number four, presentation of the Harlan Education Association's initial proposal for the twenty-four, twenty-five collective bargaining agreement.
Alright, hello, uh, my name's Chad Rons, this is Holly Burkowski, we're here representing the Harlan Education Association. And we want to give you our opening proposal. So I'll pass this out. There we go. There we go. And as you can see, we're asking for a three percent increase to the master contract, including horizontal movement. And one thing that we did talk about, and that's what the double asterisk is, if the Iowa government does pass the fifty thousand dollars for initial, for first-year teachers, we will have to start over again. So we just put that just.
No, that's good.
So, if you have any questions, it's pretty cut and dry, but if you have any questions, you can ask.
Thank you for your presentation. You and Alan, Alan and I were at the uh, finance committee meeting with the superintendent and.
Roger, I think Roger was there too, yeah.
Yeah, Roger was there too, yes. And is there any comments?
No, we just um, things are up in the air right now legislatively, but if it does change, and I, I know there's one bill right now that's forty-six-five and another one that's forty-seven-five. But we have done the numbers and there will be additional funding that probably is on the TSS strand. So it might make things a lot easier. But we'll. What is it currently?
Just in real rough sense, if they go to forty-six-two, we're at forty-four.
Forty-four, yeah.
We'll be, once this is settled, we'll be at forty-four some. So we're within a fifteen-hundred to two-thousand dollar range. We're actually closer in quite a few schools, so that does help us. But the funding is basically, you can jump in here in case I misspeak, but the funding that they're going to provide the districts, it's based upon where you're at. Not everybody's getting the same. So there are some districts that are farther away that are going to get more funding.
So everybody, all districts will be the same? Yes, that's the goal, is that you will, so even Wes Harrison, who might only be at thirty-five thousand, will get up to, they'll give them the funding to get them up to the forty-six thousand. To your advantage to be in that. At that, at that point, but yes. As long as the money, as long as the money keeps coming. Because if the money doesn't come anymore, then it's to your disadvantage.
It's very punitive on some of the smaller districts, extremely. If they're funding it. They're, well, but it depends on how close they have to get to.
What they do with the legislation.
Okay. The legislation, it's still up in the air.
Never thought I'd know.
Unthought it, man, dude, it's not.
Very good, could I get a, a motion for the approval for the presentation of the initial proposal? So moved by Jennifer, seconded.
I'll second.
Jen, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay, there you go. Next we have item number five, the presentation of the Harlan Community School District's Board of Education initial proposal for the twenty-four, twenty-five collective bargaining agreement.
So ours is similar, we, we agreed with them. Brian can talk a little bit more, but it was just the same thing, a three percent package. We don't know what SSA, Student Supplemental Aid from the legislation is going to be. We've heard two-point-five, two-point-five is what the Senate has said and three, three or three-point-five is in the House right now. So they have not, we're supposed to settle that within the first thirty days and that's long past. So I think they're also waiting to see if they sign this other bill, which would raise, um, because then they may not do the three percent. I'm not exactly sure what they're going to do. So we are prepared for three percent and honestly, that's been very easy to negotiate because you, it. If you would go to mediation, it's in statute that you either have to settle at three percent or the CPI, which the CPI, which is the inflation index, is much higher than three. So it's going to end up at three, so we might as well avoid any of that and.
You save mediation costs, you save arbitration costs, because it's still going to end up at three percent.
Yep. Yep, and it is on the package, it's not solely salary. Because like we said, our, our insurance did go up, so that'll be part of this three percent.
It's a good part of the budget, isn't it?
It's an easy one to figure anymore.
Oh yeah, it's about eighty percent of the budget.
Yeah.
Eighty-three to be exact, Brian says.
As long as inflation stays high, we will.
Yeah, it'll be easy, but yeah.
Okay, I look for a motion to approve the presentation of the Harlan Community School District's Board of Education initial proposal, the collective bargaining agreement. So moved by Jennifer and seconded.
Seconded.
By Greg, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and those opposed, no. Next we have is item number six, approval of the issuance number three, White Castle change order number one. I might say I saw this just last week, uh, that it was on the agenda and I questioned it. I asked for some, for some answers about it. Um, and Friday, uh, Stephen Manis said he'd get back to me. He did get some information today, but it's really kind of inconclusive as far as the answers. And um, I think my, my opinion is that we need a little bit more information to see what this change and why the change was and the effect of the cost.
So we talked to Stephen today and um, Jim is the expert on this for sure. But um, basically it's, it's a roofing piece and um, we're getting a different product that costs more, but takes less time to install. So um, we're getting a credit of twenty thousand dollars. Jim's, Jim feels it's a bigger credit. So we're saving in labor, but the product costs more. Um, and so, I, I mean, what we can do is we, I mean, we can table this. We do have a special board meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Definitely have to do it on a special board meeting just because of ordering.
Otherwise, we, we don't want to probably put it off another month, but if we have, we have a week that we could get some more information. Stephen has requested the information that Jim, he just hasn't gotten it back yet. So he has requested it from the CMBA architects.
They did, he did send us something here um, a couple of hours ago. And um, he, he said, from de novo in the architect's perspective, the cost savings was, was actually, I don't know if I can tell you exactly. It says a cherry on the top, because it's as good or it's at least as good a vapor barrier than what they were going to put on. It's a lot faster to um, track to get, getting a weather-tight interior, which means they can start on the interior quicker. And he says all the other spec requirements would be met as far as the insulation, the wind rating and the warranty. The warranty would be exactly the same, the wind rating would be exactly the same, the insulation would be exactly the same. He felt, you know, he actually, I think the way Stephen really kind of felt is, is they probably would have recommended this even if there wasn't a cost savings.
One of the factors too is, is that they were supposed to start on April eighth and so there's not a lot of time. I, I don't know why they waited till this late in the game to bring this to us. Because this was, I don't know, how many months ago, six, eight months ago that this uh, should have been pretty far before. But it is a major change and from what was original in the specs. So I think it deserves some, a little bit of, and this might be something that the building committee could talk about a little bit too. Stephen, if, if the board would so want that, or, or we can go ahead and approve it, so.
If Stephen were in your wheelhouse, I'll follow you there. If Stephen were here, Steve would say they would, they would probably have recommended this irregardless. And I mean, I rely on his expertise. But he said, you're getting the same warranty, you're getting the same wind rating, you're getting the same insulation. And he says it's easier actually, it's quicker to install, that's part of the reason there's, there's a credit.
Is there a question about how much the credit is? Yeah. Maybe it should be more.
We, we would definitely have to give them the decision at this, if not tonight on the special board meeting, just because of the timing of getting a project.
But we could set up a time if you wanted, that the, the facility committee could meet with Stephen and Brian or Stephen and, or the architects. I think Stephen's, Stephen's given us a lot of information, but now we need the architects to give us the why.
And Brian, the things you're talking about are very, which I say, very broad theoretical arguments. But the specific, the facts, uh, doesn't stack up for me. I mean, what, what should the cost be of those components? You know, just because something, you know, which is, the argument about the wind rating doesn't make any difference to some of those other arguments that justify this. What should justify it is that it's uh, that is, you know, facts of the cost of those items. In my, in my estimation at least.
Yeah, and like I said, the way he explained it to us today is it's, it's, it's actually a more expensive product. It's a more expensive product, but it's cheaper to install.
Well, you know, and just like, they specified a substrate, which is five-ease dent stack. And that was in the original spec. And I don't know if any of you have put tile floors in your houses. I mean, they use that cement board, I mean, it's a, it's just, it's probably in the neighborhood of fifty or sixty thousand pounds. You know, that's like thirty tons. And you know, just poof, and that's, that's gone, that's all gone away. All the labor and material is gone. And so now they substituted one shower curtain for another shower curtain. But it's like, gee, that's an awful lot of material and labor. And I don't deny it, I would say, yeah, they're going to save a lot of money and labor. But I, I don't know that we should, we should be the one to eat that labor. I mean, that's just off the top of my head without knowing the facts. But I just see a, a big part of the project that's been thrown out. I don't know why, and, and the question was asked, why did you specify it this way in the first place? And they said, well, I don't know, I think it was a common.
They, I mean, we did ask that and Stephen said, he didn't get a good answer. He just got a, well, we just thought about it a little later and thought it would be better. So they were honest about it, but they just, they didn't think about it soon enough. And you also, Jim, have asked for a unit pricing and we haven't seen that yet either. So maybe within this next week, we can get that and see, so.
And just make sure we put it on the twenty-fifth.
And we'll put it on the agenda on the twenty-fifth.
If we, if we give them an answer on the twenty-fifth, that is not going to.
Well, Kaz, what if?
Put us behind.
I don't know the answer to the question.
I sure will find out.
We can.
So, are we recommending we table it?
Well, we're discussing it.
Okay.
I'll go calling.
Can we move on to the next and then come back?
Okay. We will table this for a few minutes, and we will move on to item number seven, which is the twenty-four, twenty-two-five AEA Purchasing Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, which is the Area Education Association.
Agency.
Agency. Learning some acronyms.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, do you want, okay, this is just the consortium that we go through to purchase food, the AEA gets together and negotiates for us on our behalf, so we get the best price of food, so, and we sign this every single year with them, and thankfully that they're there, otherwise, boy, we'd have a big job, so, I hope we, go ahead and purpose.
We have to clone you.
Pardon me?
We have to clone you.
This is just another thing, is a plug for the AEA's, that they do, there's behind the scenes that people don't understand, but they do a lot of things.
He's on the phone, Natalie, you can ask him, he said it would kind of compete the timelines a little bit.
Can we vote on this first, Brian, and then?
Yep.
One sec, Stephen?
Hang on, Stephen, okay.
We have no worries.
Yes, okay, I'll make the motion. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the Purchasing Cooperative Agreement, and seconded by Jennifer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no? Okay, next, we'll go back to item six, which is the Approval of Issuance Number Three, White Castle Change Order Number One.
Stephen, you still there, right?
I am.
There you go, okay. Fire away. The question I had of Stephen is, I said, how does this impede our timelines, and he said somewhat, is that what you said?
Well, yeah, based on the approval today, they cut the order for the material loose so we could get delivery within the next few weeks, really early April is when we're targeting to have roofing supplies on site, following the architect's, the architect's approval of the material change, based on, you know, the information we have, their roofing expert team looked at this and approved it, we've provided that guidance to elevate, or, no, sorry, elevate White Castle so far, they basically told us that the, the single material we'll need to complete this assembly can be on site by April, just, that's because of the path we were going down, if we're going to change that, they would just need to change the order, which might delay things, I don't know, maybe a week or two, I guess, not a huge schedule impact, but hey, schedule impact.
Do you think, Stephen, that we, in, in a week, we would get like the unit pricing or be able to meet with you and our facility committee to understand better details?
If I knew what those details were, I would say yes, in terms of pricing, you know, with a public project, we're unable to negotiate changes, so essentially, we ask for a scope change, or a scope change is presented to us, it basically comes with the cost that we're going to get, so, like, the overall credit won't change regardless, like, that's, that's never going to change as part of this conversation, so if, if the, if the twenty-thousand-dollar credit seems unfair to the school board, well, then I would say reject it, I guess, when looking at it in the context of, this is a better product for, for our architect, this is a faster assembly completion for our contractor, you know, if you take all that into context, you know, I can speak to those details, if, if you think cost will change this conversation, from our perspective, I don't see the cost changing at all, I can provide more backup as soon as I get that from the contractor, but it'll just be providing a breakdown, not, not an opportunity to change that cost, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's a good, I mean, that makes a lot of sense, and will help us make our decision, I think.
Okay, you know, what we're leaning on are the, you know, the contracted architects, we're leaning on them, I'm certainly not a roofing expert, I can only speak to the details, the architect and the contractor share, you know, that said, CMBA puts up a ton of schools, and White Castle puts up a ton of roofs, so that, I mean, that's, that's kind of where our position lands, now knowing there's some additional knowledge on roofing just with the parties that are around this conversation right now, you know, there may be additional things I could dig up related to the material change that I could provide, I would just need to know what, what those questions are, or what's being debated.
So you're suggesting either it's to reject the change or accept the change with a twenty-thousand-dollar deductible?
Yeah, well, I mean, those are the two options on the table, if, if you're asking what our recommendation is, it'd have to be standing with the architect's roofing team and saying that this will be approved, from our recommendation standpoint, now, granted, both solutions are going to work, they both come with the same warranty, they both come with the same wind rating, it's just, we have either one material or two materials to pick from, one comes with a twenty-thousand-dollar deductible from the current contract, and one maintains the current contract value.
Well, well said, thanks for clarifying.
And your, your number one concern was, you thought, through your knowledge, that we should have gotten a bigger deductible, which is not going to change, according to this, does that satisfy you?
Not at all, I mean, you eliminate fifty thousand pounds of material from a job.
Yeah.
It's, it just is, I mean, until I have the facts, and I could be wrong, so maybe I'm wasting your time.
Material is higher, I mean.
What's that?
From that perspective, I mean, granted, yeah, Jim.
That's even questionable, so.
Dollar for dollar on a change with any contractor, and you know, ideally, this would have been specified originally, and this would have just been the owner's price, that's where we get our biggest deductible, what we're, what we're going after is in schedule impact to get us to weather tight, which allows us to start building out the interiors faster, if that, if that makes sense.
Well, it's just not a very good argument for us if, if we're, if, you know, contractors, you know, they're, they're in it to, you know, make money and, and see how they can get the job done the cheapest, and so that's why you look for the architect to specify what's wanted going into it, because these change orders are always going to cost the owners, and sometimes it's how much, and that's my question here.
Yeah.
Specifying this originally, this does sound like a fairly new product, so it, it very well could have been the case, and from what I gather, the architect just hasn't specified this product in the past, after, after Tim with CMBA, their roofing expert looked at this, you know, he, he agreed, this is the right solution, just in terms of scheduling, now, now, they made that approval prior to us knowing what the credit was going to be, so using that in context as well, you know, assuming it wasn't going to cost us more, even if it was a wash, the architect would have still approved this if that, if that changed anything.
No, I understand what you're saying, and I hope you understand what I'm saying.
Absolutely, yeah, I would agree, if we would have specified this originally, we likely wouldn't be looking at twenty thousand dollars less.
And that's just a guess on fifty thousand pounds, that, I'm not sure what that five-inch dent stack that was specified actually weighs, but it's probably a truckload or two of material.
Sure.
And they're just going to lay it on the steel deck, is what their plan is.
This, this new product adheres directly to the steel deck, correct, instead of an additional substrate that would go below that, that dent stack product.
Yep. Anything else? Thanks, Stephen.
You're there.
So what do you all think, I'll talk to you later, do you think we should?
Thank you guys.
Understanding that Stephen doesn't believe we will be able to recoup any more savings, and that the product's okay, I'm going to say I would like to move forward with it because I want to stay on timeline, get things buttoned up, get all of that, now, maybe they can attempt to answer some more questions, if we don't, that might not change anything.
It might not.
It's very true, I think having your question satisfied would be great as well, but that could, I mean, we could move forward and still have them have to talk to the agent, yes.
I'm kind of in agreeance with you, it sounds like we're not going to reap any more benefits. And, and potentially hurt our timeline, so.
So, shall we have a motion, if you would all like, or, unless you have anything to input, Jennifer?
No, I, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like we can win anything, as long as it's not going to leak.
Stephen got his hands slapped there. I think he's in there.
Because we would have to start over, right, if we said no.
If we said no, it's just back another week.
Well, if you said no, they'd have to use the products that were specified.
They have to use the other products. So we wouldn't get twenty thousand.
We wouldn't get the twenty thousand.
That's right, yeah.
And it would take long, take longer to fix, so, so, yeah, I think.
I will make a motion to accept the change order.
I'll second.
Greg makes the motion, Jen seconds it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No. Did you just say no?
Yes, three to one.
That didn't pass.
Why, three to one?
So the motion didn't pass. Okay, okay, shall we move on? Maybe something will be easier on this, right? Next is item number eight, because we did item number seven, and this is the Approval of the Universal Preschool Agreement with Shelby County Catholic School.
So, we do this annually, and we just have an agreement, and we partner with them, and their students, we, we work really well with Shelby, Shelby County Preschool, so it's just something that we do on a rate, on an annual basis.
Essentially, it's a, Jeff can speak to this too, but it's, we have a universal preschool, they actually, they bill us for what their teacher, but we count their kids, so they're all as part of our preschool, they follow the same standards, if they need supplies, they let us know, but we essentially get billed twice a year, it's worked real well, and actually, there is, we did actually, because there's a, there's a sixty-day ability to terminate in here, we actually did this for five years, so we don't have to come back year after year, so, and, because like I said, there's a sixty-day termination in there anyway, so we said, why don't we just do this for five years, and we don't have to, and it's worked well, it's really worked well.
And how does the dollars work back and forth?
It's, it's actually good for both, it's a win for us, and it's a win for them, it's, it's truly a win.
So we get to count the dollars, they count as a, preschool students count as a half of a student, so we get, we get, if they have, I don't know how many, they have twenty, those count for us, and then they bill us for the teacher.
And they are adding a preschool, they're adding an additional preschool classroom this year, that's next year, yeah, so. Thirty-some, yeah.
Well, that's good for us to know, because then they eventually come to us.
Any discussion? We'll look for a motion on this, someone like to make the motion to approve this Universal Preschool Agreement? So moved by Jennifer, seconded.
I'll second.
Jen, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay, next, we have item number nine, Policy Review Schedule First Reading, any discussion on the first reading?
I really didn't. I, yeah, there wasn't a whole lot, and I didn't see anything that stuck out, and, yeah.
Life changing impact.
Would you like to make the motion, Jen?
I'll, I'll make the motion, yes.
You make the motion to approve the Policy Review Schedule First Reading, seconded. Jennifer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no, we'll move on to item ten, E-ten, Policy Review Schedule Second Reading, any discussion, or did you notice anything on it?
I thought, again, it was cut and dry, pretty easy.
Would you like to make this motion too?
I won't, yeah.
So moved by Jen.
Seconded.
And seconded by Greg, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Next, we have item number eleven, E-eleven, the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes from the last meeting to approve, as well as the financials, so here we put Brian on the hot seat.
The financials, we're, we're tracking on everything, the budget and everything, so there's nothing really out of order there, it was actually, other than construction, it was actually a fairly, like, a slow month of bills, construction is the only thing that really raised it up, which, that's going to ramp up again here this week, that summer.
Any questions on the Consent Agenda? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, so moved by Greg.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jen, all those in favor say aye. And those opposed, no, and I'm, I got a problem, I lost my back page, I think it's the.
It's adjournable. Jane's not here, so, Jen, you're sitting in the chair or something.
I'll move closer. I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
We had that motion from Jen, the seconded.
Seconded.
By Greg, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good, opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you all.